When will other issues be addressed?
That's at the regular council meeting. This is just a hearing as well. Where's Dennis?
Dennis will be back.
Then we're gonna have the hearing for the water rate increase in the regular council.
Yeah, which nothing is that, nothing's right.
Okay. You okay? Say it again, say it again. You okay with this?
When will additional issues be addressed?
Oh, that's in the council meeting. This is just a hearing for the water rate increase.
In the council meeting?
Is it two o'clock?
Same place, two o'clock.
We wanted to give everybody plenty of time to speak in case they were...
Okay. Right over?
Sure. Love it.
If I can have your questionnaire first.
No, I'm gonna read it. I have questions on the front and the back.
Please make sure you turn it in prior to sitting down.
No problem. No problem. Okay, here we go. My name is Vicki Eaton and I'm a regular attendee at all the city council meetings. Correct? As of August 20th, this day, how many water and sewer accounts are delinquent?
Vicki, I can't tell you about it.
I understand this whole thing is gonna be for you, sir. Okay?
I don't have it off my head, honey.
Total, what are the total dollars outstanding? The total number of accounts outstanding?
As of what day?
Today. As of today. How many accounts should have been shut off per ordinance and haven't been? I ask that because that has been a prior issue and area of concern. What is the projected revenue increase? With this increase in water and sewer rates? That should be based upon the number of households. When and who is applying for the grants related to water and sewer plants? Pardon me?
That's not my department. I don't do grants, honey.
It's a, it's a question.
Are you alright? You look like you're about to fall over.
I have arthritis.
Oh, okay.
Who is monitoring the progress of saying, the grant? How's it moving along?
It's moving along just fine, thanks very much. And the city of Piedmont is in charge of getting the grants. The two, two point one million dollars up there, that's on after this question, this water plant, you get it from first phase, you're going out for bid now. That would be like one point three, give or take. That's a hundred percent grant. Then we got the second phase, two point one. So that's gonna upgrade our water plant. And it's, it's gonna be basically, I wouldn't say state of the art, but it's gonna be exceptional compared to what it is now.
That's good.
Then, what we're doing in this water rate increase, I want everybody to know, if we're trying to get the money and be stable enough with our water building so that they will give us the low interest loans and we can apply for grants as well for that, okay? They aren't just gonna give us money for everything. They just give us two point one. We're gonna apply, but we have to jump, jump through certain loopholes. We're in contact with the planning commission. Everybody, we know that through the years, we've got all these grants that same people are working on.
Okay. I'll write this one down, it's good because you brought this forward, okay? There has been an organization called the Citizens... What was the name of that thing? Accountability Committee? And it was when Rachel Colen from Ozark Regional, Ozark Plan came forward and she met with the committee. I sat on the committee. And what we were told was that grants cannot be approved for Piedmont until the committee has completed its course of action. We have not.
I don't have any idea what you're talking about.
It was the Long Range Planning Committee.
Yeah, the comprehensive plan.
Which we were supposed to have met in July and then it got postponed.
The last I heard from her was in March. And she made the statement to us that no grants could be...
And she is from where?
Ozark foothills.
Ozark foothills.
Yeah, that no grants from them could be awarded.
No grants from them.
But we also have grants for DNR.
Oh, and we have DNR, other places. I'm just trying to get specifically what you're talking about. For what grant? That we're not eligible until we get the comprehensive plan done.
Correct.
I'm aware, they have not notified me of anything like this.
From the way I understood, because I was also in on that meeting, the way she explained that was there are certain grants that will be available to us because we have the comprehensive plan, but we can't apply for those until the comprehensive plan. That wasn't meaning just these grants for water, that was just kind of across the board. Once we get the comprehensive plan done, it should open up more doors for more grants for us.
Okay.
From the way I...
We all have a different understanding, I believe.
The way they're gonna be done.
The comprehensive plan.
It's written now that she's waiting to have the meeting to present it.
She, I think she was gonna meet with us, the, the, what would we call it?
Committee.
Committee again, and then...
And then there's gonna be a public hearing presented.
Well, she'll present it at a council meeting for the Alderman to approve and adopt into our, into the ordinance.
Now, if she runs off, she's got seven minutes up now. She runs all these questions, once I'm all answered, it's gonna cut into everybody else's time. Now you all wanna work it.
I'll give her my four minutes.
Okay.
I'll give her my four.
Just keep going and you keep going, I'm fine.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Who's next? Okay.
Yeah, my name is Chris Andrews. I'm not a best at it in Piedmont, but I still am a taxpaying citizen. My question's today, because I, this meeting's been planned for how long now? Thirty days.
At least thirty days.
At least thirty, so the city should've been planning for this meeting and had answers ready. So exactly how many households does the city water and sewer service? I'm not asking for an estimate, I'm asking for an exact number due to the building record.
Yeah, I will disagree with that statement. A lot of these things you could've asked earlier than having ready, it's just trying to pray it all and it's...
Unfortunately, I have a job and I had to take on a phone here and that's why I asked a question that relates to your job. Second is, what is the total annual revenue increase the city collects twenty dollars a month combined water, sewer? High.
Probably around two hundred thousand.
My math shows that we have one thousand eighty-five households in the city of Piedmont, bring that total up to two hundred and sixty thousand four hundred dollars.
They're not all on sewer.
We have nine hundred and ninety-one tolls for water and seven ninety-three tolls for sewer.
So it floods you away, so you can't put it...
No, I get it, I get it.
Why they gave them all this?
Is there a detailed plan of upgrades or repair plan for our water sewer infrastructure? A cost breakdown, timelines, and what would be replaced first?
That is all in the engineer's hands. We can't do anything like that without engineers. They, we have some and others planned.
And the reason I ask that is I was a construction superintendent for many years and before we ever discussed any kind of monetary value of any exchange in hands, we had to have a detailed plan in place. They had to have breakdown of costs, they had breakdown of repairs.
That's how we do it here.
And I'm just asking, can we see a detailed record?
Whenever it gets done, you can. Everything is public information. This is preliminary, as I said again, it's a preliminary engineering report.
I'm not trying to say, no, I'm just telling you the way that...
In the engineer's report, once we receive something like that, you certainly will need someone to ask for copies. You can always come in and ask for copies of any, any public record you'd like.
So is that accessible right now?
It's not done yet, I said with the preliminary, preliminary, you can look at it, that's what I have it here.
And the reason I'm asking is because we already have a number on exactly how much we're wanting to post the increase without having an actual plan done, set in place to know how much money we're actually gonna need is why I ask.
I can understand that.
What guarantee do residents have that the extra revenue will be used only for water sewer improvements? Will there be quarterly updates and audits?
Not quarterly audit, you're talking, we get an audit every year. If we give grant money over certain thresholds, we have to have another independent audit besides our audit. And we bid out for it and it's bid out with the locals.
Which is also made available to everybody who would like a copy.
And all public information, anybody that wants it can...
How long has that been going on, the annual audit period?
Forever.
Ever since I've been involved. Huh?
Since before Walmart's out?
I've worked at the newspaper thirty plus years and they did an annual audit every year.
Are any city water or sewer department salaries being increased with this hike? How much and if there is no plan for that?
I mean, they're gonna be increased, whatever, but I'm not applying now.
Alright, I'm not gonna take a bunch of time, I'll wrap it up right here, just have a couple more. Do you believe that this method of notification leaves the city responsibility of transparency by hot updating people via website, email, anything other than these statements we were on?
Actually, we have a city website that retains all the information. Usually posts city council meeting times and if they're going to be changed. It's actually, Barb has it on the front page, so as soon as you go to city of Piedmont, it will flash up and you have to hit okay before entering the website.
It wasn't there this morning, did you check? There's no, there is no public hearing information, there's no city council information. It is not on the city website.
And I apologize, I believe Barb had put that on there and she also has a news, like a newsletter. So she won't update people and just hit the submit button instead of everybody's updates if you sign up for it. So make sure you do get to the city website and please sign up for updates.
Alright, and last thing is, all I'm saying is Bill and Dan, I supported you guys forever. I always had, always will. All I'm asking for is a little bit more transparency because this town's already struggling financially. We have people that that twenty dollars a month is gonna turn their lights off, take food out, or get something else. All we're asking for is a little bit more transparency.
Okay, here's the deal. What, everybody keeps saying it's transparency. Nobody wanted to come through the meeting for the years as we stepped by step this whole process and now all of a sudden I'm not transparent because nobody was up here to even hear. And that is all in the minute.
But we're here now.
I know that now, I'm complaining and crying for you, talking about you that doesn't even live in this town.
I went to the city, I went when I was in city when I said...
Yeah, everybody knows it, right up by the railroad track.
And I'll just respond back and I'll go sit down.
I'm not trying to hide anything, never have. Everybody knows my life like a book in this town. I've lived here my whole life. I've got my faults, believe me, I know they are, I have to live with them. And I'm not out to rip anybody off, I want to fix the thing if you don't want to fix it again. That'll be the end of it.
I understand that there has to be an increase to fix a broken system. I'm not disagreeing with you at all.
But what is everybody, what is your goal here? To try to figure out why we're not doing it right or what's the deal here? What is your all, your objective?
To have water that we can actually drink that ain't cloudy and murky and dirty.
Well, you keep saying that, but that's not true, we have our water.
Would you like to see water right now?
Huh?
Would you like me to go get a cup of water right now? I'm up in here because I'm sure here is perfect.
Oh, yeah.
I've actually ended up in a hospital over the water because you guys don't know my people correctly. I've got E. coli in the water right after I...
You possibly may have, we didn't have E. coli in the water.
Right after I had...
What about that bird?
And you have kids?
Twenty-two.
And do you have kids?
Yeah, I have.
Yeah, and that workplace kid, get into that? You wanna...
I'm not... When it comes to our task, all I'm asking is for a detailed plan that I can put my eyes, my hands on. I'm not saying that I have that today.
No, everybody has access to it.
I'm just saying, I'd like to be able to see that student, don't you understand it?
Well, I understand, Bill, we're talking about money.
What I want to know is, when that is, I want to know before we're already discussing a financial hit to our community, what it's gonna take to fix it, I want to know the plans. I'm not sitting here badgering, saying you're not being transparent, I'm not saying all that. I'm saying if we're gonna talk about money and how much it's gonna take to fix, why don't we not have a plan that I can see this breaks down that that's why it's gonna cost that much money? That's gonna tell me exactly the number, must've missed this.
That's a preliminary, okay? Then you get funding and then you go ahead and what's the actual plan? Who's gonna pay for it if no one else? How are we gonna get a plan, who's gonna pay for it so they can show you what's gonna happen?
Like I said, the way I worked in construction, before we talked any kind of actual money, we had to have a detailed plan, what pipe is broke here, what is here, what is there? That's what I want to know.
Yeah, but you were in the construction side, you're not one of the people that went and struck you funds.
I can hear it, I have, I've done the same thing.
Business is business.
Maybe you should have somebody on the construction side running things, it sounded like you got the detail down.
Andrew's for mayor.
Yeah, okay, who's next?
You're not, you're allowed to talk.
Okay, I just, I don't have questions, maybe just a suggestion. Would it be possible to, because the hike, the hike increase is pretty substantial when you look at the percentage of it. So, and I do believe it's gonna greatly impact some people in the city. Has the board and yourself considered maybe doing a three or five year increment? So it's not such a burden? Yeah, is that, is that something anybody's considered? It seems, I mean, it may take a little longer to get where you're wanting to get, but I also think, I mean, you've been a mayor a long time, so why didn't you think about this three years ago or five years ago and start the increment increase? That's my only suggestion, is maybe look at something like that.
Because we went through the, first of all, we didn't know what was gonna happen to the the police department house ten quarters ago, right?
Why?
No, that doesn't make any sense to me.
Oh, you don't understand expenditures out of the city treasury?
Oh, yeah.
Well, you're somebody in the police department, I, I don't understand what that has to do with...
Well, that has to do with funding, you're talking about funding as well, right? So what we have to do is go step by step on these grants again, I'm gonna tell you. You get down step by step till you get to the point to where you have to start grabbing the funds. You don't go out and get funds and then after you get funds, go back up and start stepping in then. You know, because you would have nothing, I would have nothing to argue with you about, I wouldn't have nothing to show for it.
Bill, all I'm saying is the, the water issues that you're trying to correct today didn't just pop up yesterday. They've been a problem. And all I'm suggesting is maybe you should have in the past looked at, okay, let's do a small, a percentage increase over time rather than all of a sudden now trying to raise it thirty-five percent. That's all I'm saying, and maybe from today forward, looking forward, maybe we look at it and say, hey, maybe we can do a, you know, a ten percent increase over three years or a, you know, a six over five.
Yeah, we did that before on water bill increase, before we did like that.
Okay.
We just started it up. It was a different situation. That was where we weren't trying to get the funding within range to where we qualify for grants as well as low interest loans. And I'll be straight up honest, when we get this increase, I'm not so sure that it's gonna take care of what we need. And we still have to go...
I think that's pretty important to know. You're gonna try and convince people to raise your water rates, sewer rates by thirty percent and then, and it may not even work, that's no good, I mean, that really is...
Well, it may not work, that's what you said. I didn't say it wouldn't work, that's what you said. I said it may not be enough. Okay, then you go to other funding. That's not my part. Listen, okay. The plant that we put in, third plant, just shy of six million dollars. Our payments started out around five hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year of what we started paying. And it gradually went around, oh, up, down, 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 till it's around three hundred some now. We're able to breathe again. That's where, you know, the creek was black, you couldn't even see bottom of the creek, remember that? And DNR was threatening ten thousand dollar debt lines? That's what Mr. Harper thinks I have neglected the water system, that's what I've been doing is paying for the sewer system.
You did have neglected the water system, sorry.
Paying for the sewer system, that's how much money I paid. The mayor before me didn't pay any money like that, I didn't. So now I'm trying to fix the other... Now, who's gonna drop me now?
Don't, don't speak. Don't let him speak out our people's...
Who is it?
We're not gonna get any answers, talking over each other. If you wanna talk, come up here and say it. I said yesterday, this change will affect everyone. Residents, business owners alike, please attend, voice your concerns, compare, come prepared with thoughtful questions. Remember, remember to stay calm and respectful. The atmosphere may not be friendly, but your voice matters. So unless we take each person's question to him and let him answer in a timely manner, we're not gonna accomplish anything but yell over each other. So, I'm talking so nobody else talks. Okay?
Fair enough. I wish I'd have said that.
Well, you oughta think about it. Being friendly is the part I'm gonna think about.
Hell, well, I'm getting a little stressed. I apologize for being stressed, but surely you can have...
Where are the other members? You said the meeting had to be at one o'clock because you didn't have a quorum. And it doesn't look like there's quorum here.
This is not, we're not gonna do any legislative action, this is a public hearing.
Well, why was it one o'clock then?
Because we have to have a public hearing for the water rate increase.
But you don't have to have it at one o'clock, you could've had it after hours so more people could've attended if you don't have to have a quorum. I thought that is...
Well, first of all, we were gonna have a quorum till one resigning. When to resign?
Parents should resign too.
We'll get you out. Let me get back to your question, maybe.
Okay. The first one was pretty much answered. Vicki asked if the rate increase, where would funds go? The second one was, how many people are delinquent? Can everyone hear me? How many people are delinquent? And the third one was, this additional revenue they're gonna generate from the tax increase, which we're looking at that, what's gonna happen to that? Is that gonna supplement?
That has to go to nothing but police, that's what it's designed to do.
Has to go to what?
Police. And emergency manager, emergency, anything, the tax, but that didn't pass. It didn't pass.
No, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about...
You said tax.
I'm talking about the real estate tax that they're...
Oh.
That's being raised on people in the...
They have to learn tax.
Nothing is changing with that.
I thought it was going up like a hundredth of a cent.
I thought Dennis said it wasn't changing.
It's all, maybe it's not changing.
Well, everyone's assessment is going up, so they will, you will get more tax revenue on...
Yes, yeah.
The county, the county was mandated to be raised for taxes. So everyone was...
You might bring the property by you?
Yes. So your tax, love you will, will win more money, but...
It will, yeah. I thought it was a minor amount, but maybe it is...
I passed a letter that came from the assessor's office. It's a copy of my newspaper store. They're raising the index and the assessments both. So, um, they're raising the index from two-ten to two-thirty-five and the assessments, I thought it was, it's like fifteen to twenty percent. All the assessments are going up this time and then in three years they're going to raise assessments again by the same amount.
So our property is gonna be up, we're going fifty percent?
Yeah, so your county taxes are gonna go up and then, but the city will get more tax revenue.
How's that?
The assessment's that, the assessment valuation, so your money will bring in more. Your taxes will bring in more.
So that, that increase goes towards the sixteen acres or whatever that the city bought?
That's a hundred.
What?
The sixteen acres that you bought for a trillion dollars.
Y'all have to admit, he's writing to the police when he's talking about revenue, so why wouldn't the landfill take whatever it wants? He made the police connect it to the water system, taking revenue. Getting that hundred forty-four thousand dollars, that's also a bit of revenue. So it's all about revenue, right, big five, so the landfill definitely plays into this.
Yes, it does, but I think they're gonna address that hopefully at the council meeting, right?
What you wanna, I don't know anymore, I can say that, I have an incentive.
Did you give them a price on the property before you purchased it? Did you see it, it was in the blood zone?
Yeah, we know a little bit of it.
The price?
No.
Just...
Huh?
Well, no, just throw it out there too.
No, we tried to get it for a long time. As well as other people.
We didn't do it.
You did?
But it wasn't for near that amount.
Well, it went up, because I know another person tried to get it. And he said, you go ahead, rather see the city have it because it'll do some good there, or me have it. So that's the way it went. And we jumped on it, I don't care if it's done. That can be one of my dark spots if y'all look at it like that.
It may not be done, because it's done a week ago.
It was.
If you filed a FOIA request, I bet you couldn't get any information because it was done in the guy's bedroom.
While he's dying.
There's no way to, there's no data to get on a FOIA request because it was basically done on deathbed, right? If we filed a FOIA request, we wouldn't get any conversation because it was done between you and a person that passed away. Is that not true?
He was certain, he, he, I don't know how he handled that, he probably, he may have already appointed a least all attorney that takes care of everything for you? Puts him in charge?
Power attorney?
Yeah. Puts somebody in charge and they took care of it.
Do you have the paper that shows the additional revenue from injuries probably tackled?
No, I don't.
Okay, I looked at something that was printed in the paper. And the increase seemed to be around, what, one and a half million?
That's the assessment evaluation, right?
So what, you take that off, we take the percentage off of that assessment evaluation, what they're increasing, they're correct?
And who ordered him to do that?
State tax commission.
I guess randomly said, do you increase everybody by this?
They went through the entire state and they basically told them, you either do it or we're gonna withhold all of the money from the state, which they had them over the barrel, so...
Not to mention everybody else.
Yeah.
So that's, that's another hint that people like myself who's on a fixed income, we're gonna have to store that along with the additional water sewer. And the water sewer is right up there now with my phone, internet, all of that cost per month. It's just really close to it. So I don't see how, I'm looking at you people, not down at you, but I'm looking at you as I'm here that you are in the same position I am. That things that you have to have every day, and of course you need to think extra. You can't afford to go to Coleman, you can't afford to go to Turnbull and buy what, really million stuff. Can't go to Gooch's, you can't go those places because that money is going towards something that has to sustain your daily life. So I can see where it's gonna impact, not just us, but the whole city and the whole businesses and property houses. And the rest of my comments are reserved for the council.
The what?
Council meeting.
Yeah.
That, there will not be a quorum, so why don't you have a council?
Just do it.
Well, can Linda come back here? Did you appoint someone for that?
I did.
When, how did you get a quorum?
Cause he's gonna do it.
He's gonna appoint someone.
And they're gonna vote him in automatically.
Do you have proof that that person lives in this ward that they are going to represent?
I'm perfectly satisfied.
Like we care if she's mad or not, do your job.
I wasn't going to ask the question, but I have a, I have a sewer related question. I understand that there's been some issues at the sewer plant that's required a lot of overtime and additional pumps and someone demand them. Has that been fixed, or is that part of the?
We're still having issues, uh, of course the ionized big problem. And that's what started when we were gonna do some repairs on it. Once it gets ahead and the gloom, the lagoon filled up too, which we lost some water over, but it was within our alcohol limits, so it didn't cause any problems. And we're getting the water down now, and we're gonna have to do some maintenance, pull out the, uh, sieve with an order on it. And it's got a hole busted in it, it's letting it breathe in and stop some things up inside the first two cells.
Well, when that work is done, will that eliminate the need for overtime and the additional pumping?
As long as other things don't happen, you know, you never know what's gonna happen.
Right.
Well, can I request a, regarding business to do a volunteer, what the additional revenue tax increase, the general, or the city, and where they have way plenty of to disperse that?
Are you talking water bill or taxes?
Talking about the taxes.
Oh, that would be a dense question.
The water, I assume, is going all towards infrastructure of the water and sewer system, correct?
Right.
As far as the more tax rate, when I spoke to Dennis, he will be here for the council meeting, he just wasn't gonna be here for the public meeting. So let's, before I inform anybody incorrectly, let's check with Dennis at the two o'clock meeting.
Okay, and Dennis is?
The city treasurer.
He knows all about the tax increase.
And that, can I get your questions before you sit down? I found them written down, but I just like to make sure of everybody's names. I have many questions. That, I've got them, you're good, thank you.
If we have time, can I say something just real quick? My suggestion kinda went along with what Eric said, instead of a flat, everybody pays an extra ten water, extra ten sewer, would the council consider a percentage increase? Because we all agree, we need more, we need it fixed. But instead of charging everyone the same amount, can you do a percentage of what their bill is? Cause some people pay forty dollars a month, other people pay seventy dollars a month, and if you're on a budget, it's, you know, it's a little easier. They're gonna pay less increase, they're gonna pay more increase, get what I'm saying?
Is there a rate, is there a rate on the businesses gonna go up too? Are they, twenty dollars extra too, on the businesses or?
It's just across the board.
Go, 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 great.
And I, I, to kinda go along with that, I think that's an amazing idea because the people who are filling their swimming pools and their hot tubs can, if it's six percent across the board or eight percent, whatever you decide, that six or eight percent is on many, many more gallons of water that that person's paying. Who can likely afford it? Where the individual who is living dollar by dollar, month by month, a, a ten and a ten on the sewer and water, that's a substantial raise, uh, increase. And if they're not using much water, their six, six or eight percent is gonna be considerably less than mine if I'm filling a swimming pool or hot tubs or, you know, watering my massive yard every day or whatever I'm doing. I, I think that would really help the lower income people here substantially.
Percentage is much more equitable across the board than a flat fee. The twenty dollars a month increase.
Linda?
I just wanna, I'm gonna add to this, I just wanted to mention that, uh, the twenty dollars a month increase is a forty-three point forty-eight percent increase for me.
Okay. One percent for that?
Forty-three point forty-eight, that's on my personal bill.
The standard increase in the state of Missouri is five to ten percent.
What's the standard fee for the state of Missouri for water?
I don't know what the base is, I don't even know what our base is.
I've got some averages.
Yeah.
Example, they don't have a small town on here, but state water has a Columbia that is thirteen seventy-one. As opposed to Kansas City is fifty-five thirty-two, uh, the high, sewer and water, yes.
Um, that's water. That's just water.
Randy, how much is water at your place?
We have a Patterson.
He's a mill screen.
Your water?
He's not on city water.
For water alarm? Yeah.
For Patterson, for a thousand gallons, district number two is forty dollars per thousand gallons. District number three is thirty-nine ninety-four per thousand gallons, and we're forty dollars per three thousand gallons. That, that's just Patterson and bucket retreat, just.
You can't compare apples to oranges. Most people in rural areas, and they're going to, they're giving up drilling a well, they're getting, not having to drill a well, get that water, so that's gonna be substantial.
I just was sharing what I had.
It, it should be comparing pounds of this side to other.
You have to go by treatment too, because those are wells, they, the only thing if they need anything is just a shot of ammonia, or, uh, chlorine, to go out in the system, they don't have to do any treatment like we do, we have groundwater and the surface water inflight. So we have to treat that like we're pouring it off the top of the ground. We have to bring it in, shoot it with chlorine, and flag it, set it up to the clarifier, bring it back in, more chlorine, settle out again in the clarifier. This all takes money, electric, everything, come back in, filter. And all they do on those other ones is have wells and they pump it out.
Greenbill charges twenty dollars per the first thousand gallons, Ellington is twenty-three twelve per the first three thousand gallons also. And we do forty for the first three thousand gallons.
Forty for the first three thousand? What is the, uh, what, what would be?
Cause I'm on a city limit, the money's like sixty bucks flat rate for a thousand gallons or whatever.
Water outside. Yes, water outside, city limits is sixty dollars.
For how much, three thousand?
The first three thousand gallons.
So, is it? Is it possible, what, a family of four, mom, dad, uh, two children, whatever, a family of four, what, what is the average, uh, amount of water they're gonna use in?
I think it's a hundred and fifty gallons a day, I believe. Bill, you may know.
I have no idea, but every fact is different.
Well, I understand that, I'm, I'm just trying to come up with a, a general average.
Probably five, six thousand gallons.
A month?
Okay. I used fifteen, seventeen gallons by myself.
How much?
Fifteen or seventeen.
By yourself, okay.
Okay.
So after the three thousand, better.
They're then charged per thousand gallons.
Per thousand? I, I like the overall percentage of being charged for your overall, the percentage of your overall.
Still, I, I mean, I'm a family of seven, and I work my tail off and afford what I can afford. A family of seven, our bill normally runs almost about sixty dollars a month. So increasing it, you know, fifty, fifty-five to sixty dollars, somewhere in there, so increasing it by twenty dollars is still, you know, it's still thirty-five percent increase. You know, and we get, we get hit, you know, hit, getting hit twice, it's like getting hit from all sides and trying to, you know, my paycheck's not increasing. And I understand, we got, we have things that have to improve, it's like, I can't, I can't afford to get hit too many more times, that's just where I'm at.
Or when you're a single parent, you're trying to figure out which bill you have to take, a food, kids' mouth, or pay the water, or electric?
And I know that's nothing to do with you, but the government's fixing, start cutting funds on like food stamps, like some people aren't gonna qualify anymore. And what, I mean, you know, like people that are on fixed income, and they're not gonna get their food anymore. That's the problem, they're gonna have to go to the groceries, and they're not gonna have that actually, and we're not gonna get towards the water. And I know you can't help that the government's trying to.
They don't get their water, they'll keep you up, they're gonna get their kids, because they don't have no running water.
Yes.
It, it's unfortunate that in the past we haven't had the foresight to do increases as we go along, and that we're here today and the city council wants a substantial increase, but it is what it is. And I, I think that, you know, looking forward, we need to look at doing small increases so that we're not overwhelming the, these folks in the city who have limited income. And then we can do that every year, and they know, okay, it's like, you know, my water bill's gonna go up, I got a year to prepare for it going up three percent, extra six percent, or whatever the percentage is. But, you know, a thirty-five, forty percent increase, that's pretty heavy.
Hi, just like to say one thing, I'm happy with it going up, but I know the reason why, because it is getting, you know, you guys go out and prepare a pipe, and then the next place up, you prepare it up. One day it's just gonna explode, and it's gonna be on a Friday, nobody's gonna have the water probably for the weekend, just by some hole, we don't prepare things like they're saying. But let me tell you, if you guys wanna be negotiators, you can go negotiate my insurance company, it went up thirty percent on everything I own and everything I have. Groceries went up forty-five percent since last year, so why don't you negotiate with them?
Okay, so finally down to your top.
Table went up, that ain't worth a dime. And every one of you sitting in here, probably like me, you buy a bottle of water out of the stadium down here, the ten dollars, forty-nine to two-sixty-nine, I don't hear any of that.
We have to buy that because we can't drink the water that comes out of the pipes.
I use, I use my water, believe me.
It's forty and bleach.
I use my water, then you pay for cell phones, they went up to a high.
Billy, you're telling them they're not saying anything.
Because he's gonna do it.
Well, you're all telling me your, all your stories of hardship, but you act like we don't have any hardships trying to get all this fixed. And everybody tells us how to do it, do this, do that.
Okay, my question is, is with this increase, do the water and sewer department employees, are they gonna get an increase of their salary? And by how much? And my, and my thought is, is that once he gets so much money to play with, what is he gonna go do with it, my Mariana?
Hey, I wanna tell you something, Mayor.
Hey, 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 chief, you're outlying, buddy.
Thank you, come on, bring it, I just took you to federal court once, I was like, yeah.
Very honest man, he wasn't lying.
Oh, bull.
Now, he said.
Oh, bull. I, I've been, he's been proved a liar in federal court, thank you.
No, you're not a liar.
Yes, you were, that's why I told her.
You're lying, I apologize, but we're not, I, uh, let you make sense, we're not here to give each other.
He gotta go.
You wanna talk back here, go ahead.
I do, sir. Um, I just wanna say that I totally agree with your outline for how the increase on the water could go. Um, percentage, you know, a certain percent for over something here, I don't know the numbers, okay? But that would hurt a lot less people initially, and we could then begin to prepare for the increase for the next three years or however long you run this for. And I want to thank you for that.
You're welcome, thank you.
And that's what this public is here, public hearing is here, everybody can communicate, we can be open and clear, and, you know, the communication level between the council and the mayor and the community, that's what we're here for today. Nobody's here to make a deadline decision, but everybody can hear your inputs. So it is appreciated that everybody took the time out of their days to show up.
We're all.
That's a good point right there, out of the day, and this could've helped.
I can help, it's a reminder.
Bill, is there any look into the budget, city budget overall, to make cuts to try to recruit some money and other departments to help with this issue?
I'm doing everything I can, I know that.
Sell that land and put that money towards.
What's that?
Sell that land and put that money towards.
I can't hear what you're saying.
You don't wanna hear.
Yeah, I do.
You don't wanna hear. Sell that land and put that money towards this project.
Well, that's.
That's, I have a year event though. I'm just, I'm gonna be a driver.
Dropping it lucky, so.
All right, we're gonna hear from a poor one back there.
Okay.
Just fiddling. Okay, so I have to buy drinks tomorrow, and I do get city water, and it costs me sixty-seven dollars a month, I just find justice in the water, okay? And I appreciate having the water, because I wanna work at my laundry and take a shower, you know, and borrow my little plan or whatever I have. But when you live on less than eight hundred dollars, that hits hard if you don't have it to give, you know? So I'm just saying from the poor, poor person, I don't ever count, this is the first one I've been, but I'm just counting from a poor person's perspective, that's what, see, I have insurance on anything but my feet, so that's all I can afford. I don't have swimming pools or any of that bad, I can't afford that stuff. You know, I'm looking to take care of myself and my two little cats, that's it. And that's what I do, that's my life, that's all I do. I try to get myself put back together so I can walk, other than that, that's it.
All right, thank you.
Is this falling on deaf ears?
Yes, it is, sure is.
Hey, didn't that? Bill?
What?
Is it falling on deaf ears, everything will all pay?
No, I mean, I'm not the best, my ears don't work the best, I can hear Tina mouthing, but, uh, that's normal. So, I'm listening to every, what everybody's saying, whether it's the truth or not, okay? What do you got, Jan, you got something?
So she just meant was this set in stone, and this gonna happen regardless of what your niece did?
Well, no, I doubt yet, it hasn't happened yet.
Do you have any idea when the decision will be made?
Could be today, could be put off again. But if it's put off, it's, you're not getting an increase, so.
Put it off then.
And I'll just have to check with the funding agencies about this.
Percentage?
Yeah. And when we have to qualify, you know, we have to apply for these funds. Like I say, there'll be some grants, if they're different agencies you're going to, some of them, uh, will be a hundred percent grants.
Are you working with, what, what agency are you working with right now?
Right now, we're going through the planning.
Planning commission?
Yeah.
Is it DNR or?
D R A, D N R.
Okay.
And then, let's see, has Tina even mentioned anything, they haven't mentioned anything. Well, that is the primary. The bonds are already passed, that was in election, you know, that's what gets me about transparency, we even had an election to approve the bonds to do this. And then it's a big shock to everybody that. We're gonna have to have the funds to get the money.
Like, he dropped a good suggestion about percentage based increases. Well, why couldn't we come up with some kind of cutoff and weigh that ten dollar fee for people on fixed income below a certain level? I'd say SSI.
As I said, we'll have to talk to the funding agencies and lay across them, if the council decides to do this, what we will have to do and our next steps are, this is a new one that, uh, you know, the graduated increase. So we'll just have to see what they say, if it's gonna hold a project up or what. Because somewhere, we're gonna have to have enough money to pay the money back, is what it is. And not only pay the money back, but we have to have enough revenue that we can maintain the system that we just improved, that's what they go for. Tina?
You talk about all these bonds and grants and stuff that you have to apply for, how many have you actually applied for and gotten in your terms of being mayor?
Uh, more than any other mayor.
That's not, you didn't answer my question.
I don't know, I don't run a tab on all the time.
So, but when it comes to the water department, you just let that slide?
No, I've got all kinds of grants going.
And we have records of that, if we can get copies of those records, on how many grants and bonds that you have, have got for this thing?
Sure can, but it's all public information.
I'd like copies of that. On a better note.
Well, that's okay, she's trying to dig up stuff, but it's all there.
I'm sorry, I just, on a better note, I just want you to know that home's power is not overflowing, repeatedly, as it once had been. So, good job.
We, yeah, well, we did, yeah, we've all went on it, it's better, but it's still not completely.
Okay.
But we're getting very close.
Yeah, I got a question. I mean, you, you get that company that's coming out, they're gonna do, they did the survey of sewers and the water lines and all that stuff, they're supposed to come out and do smoke tests, and also dig up on both sides of meters, see what the pipe looks like. When, when are they gonna?
That's two different projects, one, the lead service inventory, the other is the smoke testing for these projects. They were, they keep promising, uh, that's Smith and Company, uh, promising, they promise it's over a year now.
Is there any way we can force them to get, get off the dump, and start doing the dump?
The last time we spoke to Smith and Company, they informed us that these smoke bombs that they use to put in the sewer and water system to test where everything goes, those are on the back order, and then they said that they only have a limited supply there, it's not enough to do a full maintenance tally. So I believe they're trying to find a supplier for their smoke testing, is what the whole of this right now.
Sharing that kind of information in advance of being questioned about it would help lead to change.
Which are normal questions, that you can come in any day of the week, you can do it, instead of taking up a council.
See, that's, that's the difference.
The council, we are your time, we are your time.
We can, we can take their time up.
The council comes in to make legislative decisions, I work, Bill works, you know. Continue. We have the answers to most all your questions.
Why do you have so much turmoil on the board then, why do two people resign at a board, this is a lot of turmoil in a board?
Because they were.
There's something, there's something to it.
Is that what? It's unusual, it's unusual, I'll say that.
And to keep one on that don't live in the water.
Yeah. Bill. I thought there was some business in here. Let's just look down, we're gonna need to lure people up, lure into this water, like more stores, more grocery stores, besides Town and Country. They're working on it, where they're. Town and Country is good, but Jesus Christ, they're outrageous. Let's get some, let's get some businesses in here.
How many of us shop outside, is anyone outside of K-Mon for groceries?
Is there a comprehensive, accurate, uh, mapping of all the city and water lines in the city?
There's coal lines, that's another thing they're doing, is to comprehend the plan, all maps.
Who's doing it?
Smith.
Smith.
They're already done, sorry, I'm a little bit, uh.
Yeah, I got you.
They, uh, they've done, uh, drawn scans, and riddled the whole place, located all our main homes, and I forget what the next one, they're, uh, relocating each lot in the city. It's ours, and every other, what it's, we're gonna rent it for residential, commercial, doing all kinds of stuff.
Okay.
And that goes with comprehensive plans. So it's got a way to go, yeah.
Okay, I'd like to make two suggestions, maybe a financial committee to check for customer, their department, and I know the one.
Check for what?
Cash, in other departments, because, like, you have to work, and you can start by cutting some of the revenues, going out for wages, taxes, insurance, that's a big chunk of money. And what we're getting in return does not seem to justify that kind of. My second, and he says, do you have a parliamentarian?
A what?
Parliamentarian.
No, what you doing up with that matter?
All these people talk and help each other.
Huh? That's a parliamentarian, what?
Well, my parliamentary procedure, I teach in the FIA.
He tries to do that, but he's already, gotta get out of here.
Kinda equated to the sergeant at arms.
Right. And if, if people don't go by the rules that is set forth, they're asked to leave. And if they aren't, they don't leave, then they're physically removed, because you cannot get in a meeting like this, with three people, and continually talk over each other, and interact, and accomplish anything.
Oh, I think we got where we needed to be.
I agree with you on that one.
This, this, uh, hold the gear, that, any group can be on something.
Mark that on the calendar, I got that recorded.
Okay, we, this gentleman back there, you better hurry.
Yeah, I wanna say something, I'm getting a knock shot, so one minute I'll go say it. People have got a lot to alter. Got a beautiful lake out here. People come to town with us, oh, come down here, they come down Main Street, the age, they leave the same one. Now Manny's wife come down here, for forty years, fishing, loving. And I'm like, honey, you know, we're about ready to retire, let's sail and go down to Feedmont. Well, let's go down with the wrong person. But if they come down, they go off the Main Street, and it's a loop, made mistake. Also, on Main Street, we got a house that been tearing down for two years now. And it's, that really looks good, if they wanna live here. That's it.
And if you're not part of revitalization, you're helping to write the U of U.
Do you guys wanna revitalize?
Has said, if you're not part of the revitalization of the community, you're helping to write the U of U.
And I said, Vicki, you're in the revitalization. You have? You don't.
There are several people, it's not.
I don't even know what, I started saying there's a committee? Or is that just a group of us?
Who have a vision, who are working towards it, nothing formal.
Well, get it all together, and I'll deputize you, and you can go out in the community.
I'd like to counter what he said with an experience I had a couple weeks ago. Working down at the coffee shop, I had this young man, mid twenties, pulled up in a truck from Colorado. I thought, oh, there's a pantry stop, and he get coffee. He comes in, he's asking, how do I get cell phone service, what kind of internet providers? I just moved here, bought a house on thirty-four that I'm redoing. He's from Colorado, his new wife is from New York, they just had a baby a couple months ago. They decided to find a spot in the middle, they got online, started looking at properties and stuff, and they picked Feedmont. And he come in that Sunday after there was music at five different places in town, and he was so excited, because they had found a small town that had events and activities and such charm. They came from out of state, both directions, and picked Feedmont, there's potential, if we work together.
We've had people come into town, he, a man, from St. Louis, to go to the UFO park, and period, that's all he wanted to do. And he did it, took pictures, and said, I'm coming back with more family, okay? So, there's opportunities here, it's being overlooked.
Okay, it's about time to close it up. Thanks for your hearing. Now, time for the council meeting. Ready? Recording.